Okay. Just about ready. Okay, all right, we'll call to order the public hearing relative to the mayor's proposed budget for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Anyone who wishes to address the board with respect to the budget, there was a call in number, please call in, they'll get you into the queue and they'll call you back when it's time for you to speak. I apologize for delay, it took us a little while to get everything set up so that we could be able to do this tonight. And with that, we can go to the first speaker. Fifteen minute limit for this budget hearing. I will give you a five minute and then a one minute heads up. I mean, a one minute heads up, I'm sorry, a one minute heads up. Please state your name and address for the record when you begin to speak. Get the first caller.
You got a dove.
That's me, sorry.
I recognize that sound Roger, I had one growing up.
You are now on with the Board of Aldermen.
Good evening.
Good evening, Larry.
Okay, should I start?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. Lawrence DiPello of 11 Steuben Street. Good evening. Our fiscal year begins July 1st and Mayor O'Leary is proposing a $421 million mayoral budget that represents a 60.21 mil rate in personal and real property taxes. This year, our grand list provided a modest $5.9 million increase in revenue. And once again, Mayor O'Leary is proposing to spend that $5.9 million rather than provide Waterbury taxpayers with some much needed tax relief. As a matter of fact, ever since Mayor O'Leary was elected, some nine years ago, he continues to spend every dime of additional tax revenue we receive rather than provide Waterbury taxpayers with the reduction in their tax burden. In 2018, our audited spending came in at $405 million. Beginning July 1st, Mayor O'Leary is proposing to spend $421 million representing an additional $16 million in spending. This mayor's $16 million increase in spending does not include the additional $36.5 million we are scheduled to receive in state alliance grant monies. This $36.5 million in addition to the $224 million we already spent from our general fund to support our education department. You may ask, what is this mayor doing with all these additional millions of dollars in Waterbury taxpayer monies? He's hiring more and more bodies to populate his office. Last year, the mayor added staff and had 11 positions, not including his two part-time community service workers, which he says adds up to zero. That's called funky math. 11 plus two employees the mayor chooses not to count isn't enough. This year, he's proposing to add an additional two bodies, more patronage, while at the same time claiming he's found no way to reduce the tax burden on us Waterbury taxpayers, not by a single penny. Thirteen employees plus two the mayor chooses not to count is 15 bodies. One has to wonder where he's finding the room in the mayor's office for all these desks and chairs. On page 17 in your mayor's proposed budget book, it states that Waterbury currently employs 1,056 employees. That's excluding teachers and all other education department staff. This mayor is unwilling to reduce his proposed 60.21 mil tax burden on us by even 100. Yet at the same time, he is proposing to use the additional $5.9 million in tax revenue to support his hiring six employees, two of which will populate the mayor's office, bringing our new total to 1,062 employees excluding the education department. I propose for your consideration that you have the mayor provide you by department, each employee name, date of hire, and their position as it is exactly described in the mayor's proposed budget book. This will avoid the usual trick of calling the position one name in the budget book and a different position name in the department detailed reports. Include each employee's current base salary less any additions for on-call or other enhanced duties. Then include each employee's total projected earnings, including the on-call and other enhanced duties, as audited in 2019 and projected to June 30th, 2020. Based on that data, I propose you cap all employee on-call and other enhanced duties to a specific dollar amount for each department. In addition, you defund, defund all current vacant positions, including positions in the process of being advertised, and direct Mayor O'Leary not to fill any vacant positions during this budget process. Historically, vacant positions are filled by the mayor on a temporary basis to frustrate defunding unnecessary positions. I further propose that you direct the mayor to provide a department-by-department spreadsheet detailing the actual projected savings to June 30th due to this terrible coronavirus pandemic that has put each of us, our family and friends, and a good portion of city government in lockdown. Yesterday, according to the Republican American newspaper, the mayor is ordering a hiring and spending freeze due to the coronavirus pandemic. The mayor said he's not hiring 10 police officers and an equal number of firefighters, but he never mentioned the two proposed patronage hires in the mayor's office. In the same article, Mayor O'Leary said he hopes to build up the city's surplus so it can be used as a buffer to any budget shocks that might come from the economic downturn prompted by the coronavirus pandemic. On page six in the mayor's proposed budget book, you will find the following. Continued stability in the city's general fund balance of $23.6 million allows the opportunity to continue to budget a $3 million designated use of fund balance, a mil rate mitigation tool that the city has never made use of. Well, that's wonderful news because this means we do not need to create a separate surplus buffer fund for the mayor as reported in yesterday's Republican American newspaper. Our city's current general fund balance of $23.6 million is the exact mil rate mitigation tool we need to address the potential budget shock created by the coronavirus pandemic, exactly what it was put in place to accomplish. I propose that you, Alderman, with the assistance from the mayor and the budget office, review and determine an appropriate dollar amount that may be in addition to the proposed $3 million from the city's $23.6 million general fund balance to alleviate any budget shock that might come from the economic downturn prompted by the coronavirus pandemic. I further propose that the savings realized by defunding all current vacant positions, defunding positions in the process of being advertised, defunding vacant positions the mayor usually fills on a temporary basis through patronage, especially the two additional positions in his office, and the projected millions of dollars of surplus funds due to the lockdown of city government due to the coronavirus pandemic, that all these savings, along with whatever additional savings you, Alderman, identify and deem appropriate, be credited during this budget process to significantly reduce the mayor's proposed 60.21 mil rate to a much lower mil rate, one that will truly give the beleaguered Waterbury taxpayer the relief they need and deserve during this truly devastating coronavirus pandemic. I also noticed last year during the recession, during the reelection for mayor campaign, O'Leary gave back $6,600 in salary. Remember his pledge during another mayoral election campaign not to take his salary plus his generous city-funded pension retirement pay? Well, that didn't last long either. I propose that you take back that $6,600 that the mayor has put back in this budget and make that salary give back permanent until the next mayoral election cycle. On page six in your mayor's proposed budget book, you will find the declaration that our water and sewer rates are being held at the same level as fiscal year 20. That's great news for the towns who receive our water and sewer and pay a fraction of what we are charged, but it is devastating to us taxpayers who are being forced by this mayor to subsidize his cohorts in the other towns. On page 281 in your mayor's proposed budget book, you will find the sewer charge for Watertown's audited actibles, 2017, $677,000, 2018, $843,000, and 2019, $2,910,000. I asked you, Alderman, at the last two previous meetings, did Watertown pay up its arrears in 2019 or are we carrying anticipated revenue as actual audited income? The mayor in this year's proposed budget book states that Watertown will pay $2,900,000 for sewer usage. Have they agreed to pay it up or is something else happening with the books? This mayor in his first term gave Watertown a five-year contract paying a fraction of what we pay for water and sewer usage. And under intense pressure from Alderman and the Waterbury public, the contract was allowed to expire without being renewed. This matters in Superior Court. A basic news blackout. Who from the city is prosecuting our case? Who is the judge that is holding up the proceedings? Or is this just more foot dragging by Mayor O'Leary who has left Waterbury businesses and Waterbury taxpayers subsidizing a far more affluent Watertown business and residential community? Wilkett sewer charges audited actibles, 2017, $321,000, 2018, $350,000, and 2019, $302,000. The mayor's proposed budget book states that Wilkett will pay its usual $315,000. During Mayor O'Leary's entire nine years as mayor, he has allowed Wilkett businesses and residents to pay 86 cents per 100 cubic feet for sewage while having no issue charging our businesses and residents $2.47 per 100 cubic feet for the same sewage usage. As if Watertown and Wilkett weren't bad enough, this mayor since taking office is giving away our water and sewer utilities to his cohorts in the surrounding towns at our cost. Who has this mayor been representing these past nine years? I can guarantee it's not the Waterbury taxpayer and ratepayer. You have your work cut out for you this year. This is an extremely difficult time for Waterbury businesses and homeowners during this coronavirus pandemic. This is no time for partisan politics or posturing. Our citizens and businesses need immediate tax relief to get through these difficult times, and we look to the mayor and you, Alderman, to provide that relief by applying good financial practices and reducing our 60.21 mil rate tax burden. In addition, I propose you take the appropriate legal action to charge a 10% surcharge over what we pay to all other towns that use our water and sewer services, thus reducing the burden on Waterbury businesses and residents. This obscene disparity in rates has gone on nine years too long. Thank you very much.
To the next one.
You are now on the line with the Board of Aldermen.
Good evening, Mr. President, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Tom.
Okay, Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. Good evening, I am calling in support of the mayor's proposed budget for this year. I am very thrilled that some of the things that are on this proposed budget, such as capital improvements, it has double the amount of milling and paving, which most residents are always very happy with this administration for their continued support and doing. It also has a effort to, the needs of the Chase Building that are in such dire need and should have been done in previous administrations, but yet again, it's another tackle that this administration's taking on, and I think that it's something that's much needed. Through everything that I could see, it's just the continued improvements throughout the city. That's one thing that I like about these proposed budgets is that there's something in it for everywhere in the city. It's not always certain parts of the city, and I gotta give kudos to the budget team and the mayor's office on it. You know, some of these areas are areas that have been needing the support of the city for many years, and you know, it's just another testament to this administration. And yet, last week, we saw, like in previous years, the mayors asked for a hiring freeze and the cost savings from any of the departments, whatever they could do, and they have to continue working with the mayor's office on cost savings. Why anyone would suggest that we need to fix that? I mean, this way of thinking, it hasn't costed the city a dime. It's actually gotten a surplus after surplus after surplus, so why fix something that isn't broke? I would ask for the continued support of this administration and what they've been doing to balance our budgets. As we know, 2022 is going to be a great year for us, but I would ask that you support this budget. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is anyone else? No other callers? Okay. That was the last caller for the public hearings, so we will go then to call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, April 20th, 2020. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance and the silent prayer.
Alderman Brunelli.
President.
Alderwoman Cavalo.
Present.
Alderwoman Cato. Alderman DiGiovin Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorsa.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderwoman Martinez McArthur.
Here.
Alderman Nujain.
Present.
Alderman Salvia.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Alderman Pernaroski.
Here.
15th. Present.
Thank you. Business thing would be public speaking. Anyone who addressed the board again, there was a call, there was a bell, you should have called in. When you begin speaking, we'll call you back. When you get on the line, begin speaking, please state your name and address for the record. There is a five minute, I'll give you a one minute heads up. Is there anyone?
You are now on with the Board of Aldermen.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Paul.
Yep, go ahead, Larry.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Lawrence DiPello, 11 Steuben Street. On March 9th, March 23rd, April 6th, and again tonight, I remind you that our train station that was scheduled to be completed by the spring of 2018 hasn't had a single shovel put into the ground. Currently, there is granite curbing, new sidewalks, and upgraded utilities being laid along Meadow Street where our train station is scheduled to be constructed. Will you, Alderman, please take this matter seriously and seek to find out when and where our train station is to be built and further determine before it's too late if it will require tearing up the newly installed curbing, sidewalks, streets, and parking lot along Meadow Street? This past Friday, the Republican American newspaper reported that Governor's State Bond Commission decided that Waterbury and Danbury didn't deserve and were cut out of receiving new train cars. Mayor O'Leary's only reaction was that he was disappointed, but not completely surprised because the Connecticut-230 Plan had always anticipated highway tolls as part of the funding mix, and that Mayor O'Leary continues to support highway tolls, including the proposed tolls along the Mixmaster. That would, in my and many others' opinions, be devastating to Waterbury. Interestingly enough, the Connecticut House Minority Leader, Charle, uh, Charles Lamont, dropped the Waterbury line as political retaliation because she and a number of other Nogatuck Valley legislators opposed highway tolls. Well, now we realize that the highway tolls to Waterbury had nothing to do with roads and bridge repairs and everything to do with this mayor's support for tolls to get train cars that will stop at an imaginary Waterbury train station if you, Alderman, take no action on this issue. We know those whose side, uh, we know whose side the mayor is on, and in this instance, it's not Waterbury's side. I want you to know that I'm also in support of your item 13, suspension and modification of tax deadlines and collection efforts for those of our residents and businesses that have documented proof that their income has been severely curtailed due to the coronavirus pandemic. It's an extension from 30 days to 90 days to pay their Waterbury taxes that are due and payable on July 1st. An additional 60 days will have little impact on the city's overall finances, but it may give those residents and those businesses that have been severely impacted from this outbreak and having to lose their jobs, maybe get some unemployment, and those businesses, for most part, many of them closed, they need a little bit of a hand up to get back on their financial feet. And although this is only a 60-day reprieve, hopefully it will give those businesses and individuals the hand up that they will need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other callers? It's like deja vu.
Yes, for, for Joe.
You are now on with the Board of Aldermen.
Good evening, my name is Thomas. Good evening, my name is Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I'm calling in support of the Wendell Cross Amendment and their, just another clear example of this administration working with the contractors to save the taxpayers of this city money, and I think it's going to be a magnificent school once it's done. Secondly, the bucket truck that is on the agenda for the education department is much needed. The education department has had to try its best to utilize the Park Department bucket truck over the years, and they've done their best to complete projects, but this has been way too long waiting for a bucket truck, so I would ask that you pass that. In regards to what was said previously about the amount of people in the mayor's office, I would have to give kudos to all the people that the mayor has hired over the years, especially now during the pandemic. They've done one heck of a job helping our elderly, our most vulnerable, the people that need help in such tumultuous times, and to attack those people in the mayor. If the mayor didn't think that the people in his office were doing their job, he wouldn't have him there. He's not just hiring people just to hire people, first of all. And to have people come up and say nonsense like that, listen, I know quarantining is getting to a lot of people, I understand, but we all need to remain civil here and go by the facts. And I know that if that person had ever called the mayor's office for help, he would have sent somebody there to help him out any way he could. That's what he's been doing for all the elderly people in the city of Waterbury. So I would hope that the nonsense and the bickering, you know, attacking this mayor, you know, I understand that people want to get their five minutes of fame on TV instead of calling in. It just can't happen that way. Everybody needs to remain safe, listen to the guidelines from the mayor's office and the governor's office. The quicker we do that, the quicker we'll all be back together. And, Mr. President, I hope to see you guys soon, stay safe, and continue to do the great work that you guys are doing with this administration. Thank you.
That's our last caller for this evening. So with that, the next item on the agenda would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Monday, April 6th, 2020. Is there a motion with respect to the minutes, Alderman Brunelli?
Mr. President, motion approved, the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, April 6th, 2020, so moved.
Second. Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez, are there any additions or deletions to the minutes? Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez, are there any additions or deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, then, yes, vote would be to approve the minutes as read, and no vote to disapprove. Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The motion carries and the minutes are approved. Um, the next item we have, it should have been sent to you. Item number fourteen, which is a budget transfer to be added to the budget this evening. It's regarding a, a transfer of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the city's account to a new citywide account with COVID nineteen related expenses and the Health Department's emergency medical supplies account. So I would entertain a motion to add number fourteen to the agenda this evening. Alderman Brunelli?
So move.
Second.
Made by Alderman Lo- uh, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries the items added as new business item number fourteen. Um, given the, uh, fact that we're all in, in different places and just for the ease of getting through the agenda this evening, I did talk to the two, uh, committee chairmen and their agreement that we just do this, uh, this meeting at least, uh, still as a committee of the whole. So I would entertain a motion, Alderman Brunelli, that we refer new business items number one through fourteen to the committee of the whole.
So move.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries and the items are referred. And with that, Alderman Brunelli, I would entertain a motion to, uh, uh, recess into the committee of the whole.
So move.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Then the first item on the agenda this evening is, um, a request for an approval of an agreement to enable the Benefit Strategies LLC to administer the city's Section one twenty-five plan flexible spending account, pendant care account, Cobra Administration, retiree billing, and benefit strategies. Is there a motion with respect to item number one?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion having been made and, uh, to approve and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the agreement, a no vote would be to disapprove it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The motion carries and the agreement is approved. Item number two is on, is, um, item number two is an amendment number one to an agreement with Newfield Construction Group LLC, construction manager at risk service for the Wendell L. Cross prepay to eight grade construction project, RFP number six three three seven. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion seconded by, was that Alderman Lopez?
Yes, sir.
Didn't sound like you. Um, having made this during discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the amendment, a no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries and the amendment is, um, approved. New business item number three is requesting the review and approval of an operations and maintenance services agreement with the Bay State Elevator Company for a three-year period and a not-to-exceed amount of one hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred eight dollars for elevator maintenance and repairs at various schools. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve item three.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Martinez McCarthy, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries and item number three is approved. Item number four is requesting review and approval of an operations and maintenance services agreement with Train US Incorporated for a three-year period and a not-to-exceed amount of one hundred ninety-four thousand, three dollars and forty-three cents for chiller maintenance, repair services at various schools. Is there a motion?
Motion approve item number four.
Second.
Motion having been made, Alderman Brunelli, seconded by a couple of Alderman. Alderman Lopez. Is, is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve the, uh, operations and maintenance services agreement and a no vote would be to disapprove it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the motion carries. Item number five is on, is, um, requesting review and approval of a maintenance services agreement with SNE Building Systems Incorporated for a three-year period and a not-to-exceed amount of two hundred forty-six thousand, two hundred dollars for building automation services at various schools. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion approve item number five.
Alderman?
Second.
I'll get you next time, Sandy. Seconded by Alderman Lopez, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries and the item is approved. With respect to item number six, requesting review and approval of a construction contract with Bay State Elevator and a not-to-exceed amount of ninety-three thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars for hydraulic elevator in-ground cylinder replacement at Reagan School. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion approve item number six.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by, uh, Alderman Martinez McCarthy, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the motion carries. Item number seven, requesting approval of a budget transfer from the city's capital improvement fund for the fiscal year ending June thirty twenty twenty in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion approve item number seven.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded that one.
Brenda.
Uh, Alderman Kodo, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Alderman Zimmerman?
Uh, I have a question on what was originally budgeted for this item.
So, let me just, this is the budget transfer which would move three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in the unallocated capital account to an existing project for the continued groundwater monitoring, reporting and remediation of the brass mill common site, which is pursuant to a nineteen ninety-four guarantor agreement. The city is to fund the remedial actions related to the site for a period of thirty years in accordance with the plan for brass mill commons. The budget transfer would add additional activities required at this time, including additional well installations, system startup, chemical injections, and ongoing well monitoring and reporting. So your question then is what was originally budgeted for the, uh, water monitoring, reporting, and remediation of brass mill?
Correct, because I'm understanding this is in addition to what we would probably had budgeted, right?
Yes, additional work. So, Sarah, do you, um, and Sarah, can you just maybe talk a little bit about how that process works, the budgeting and the transfers, what goes into that over, over time? In, in addition to sort of answering this?
Sure. Good evening, Sarah Gary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist. Um, as far as budget transfers goes, there's several on your agenda tonight. Um, on the capital budget side, we have a couple of transfers. Um, typically you'll see bu- budget transfers for capital projects. Um, when we run into unforeseen situations, um, that's when you'll see them most typically. Um, we do have an unallocated capital account which we would use to transfer to these types of projects. On the general fund side, you may often see transfers from our contingency account. We do budget a contingency account, um, for the reason of things that come up during the year that may be unforeseen, um, such as cost overruns in fuel, utility, um, accounts, snow removal accounts, and then things that were unforeseen in our emergency situations such as COVID nineteen, which you'll see a couple of transfers related to that this evening. As far as the three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar transfer to the brass mill commons project, this is a project that dates back many years. So far in total, approximately eight point seven million dollars has been spent on this project. Um, the city is responsible for funding this based on the nineteen ninety-four guarantor agreement. The city agreed to fund the remedial actions related to the site for a period of thirty years, as President Perner, as we just mentioned. This budget transfer would fund additional activities such as the well installation, system startup, chemical injections, and ongoing well monitoring and reporting. Typically, we funded this project out of year-end surpluses from time to time. So we've appropriated additional funding to this project over the years. So this didn't necessarily go over budget. This is just the next, um, phase of the project that needs to be funded and the project is now in need of about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on item number seven? Hearing none, then the motion on the floor is to approve the budget transfer. A yes vote would be, uh, to approve the transfer, a no vote would be to disapprove the transfer, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries and the budget transfer is approved. Item number eight is a request for the approval of a budget transfer from the city's capital improvement fund for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars, which would move that money from the Board of Education's unallocated capital account to an existing project for the replacement of vehicles. Funding in the amount of ninety thousand is approved from fiscal year fifteen capital budget for the purchase of a bucket truck. At that time, the Education Department was planning to purchase the forty-five foot bucket truck. However, after further evaluation, it was determined that a sixty-foot bucket truck would better suit the department's needs, including cutting trees and inspecting roofs throughout the school district. The Education Department is in the need of an additional fifty-seven thousand, five hundred in order to purchase a sixty-foot bucket truck. Is there a motion with respect to this item? Alderman Brunelli?
Motion approve item number eight.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Kodo, is there any discussion on this?
I do have one question, Mr. President, please.
Alderman Zimmerman?
I'm a little confused on how we can use money that was approved in a FY fifteen budget.
I'll take that question, Sarah Gary, Policy and Budget Management Specialist. Um, this project was approved back in FY fifteen capital plan, um, as President Perner has stated. At the time, as he mentioned, a forty-five foot bucket truck was planned and now the department would like to purchase the sixty-foot truck because it would allow them to inspect roofs and cut trees and also take care of other projects. Um, it was approved several years ago. There's been some turnover in the school inspectorium's position since then. Um, I think the department realized after the funding was approved for the forty-five foot bucket truck that after a couple of years, they felt they needed the larger bucket truck. Um, so at this point, they requested the additional funding to from the sixty-foot bucket truck. I would note that the funding is coming from the Board of Ed's Unallocated Sinking Fund. So it is capital funding, um, that's unallocated on the education side. And this transfer has been approved, um, already by the Board of Ed. Capital projects, the funding doesn't lapse for those projects as the fiscal year ends. So when that project was approved back in FY fifteen, the project was set up, um, and the money has been sitting in a project for the purchase of this truck since then. And because it's a capital project, the funding doesn't lapse at the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion on item number eight? Hearing none, then the motion on the floor is to approve the budget transfer. A yes vote would be to approve the transfer, a no vote would be to disapprove it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the budget transfer is approved. With respect to new business item number nine, it's requesting approval of a budget transfer within the city's general fund for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, which would move thirty thousand from the city's contingency account to the Police Department's Office and Supplies and Operations account. The department has been purchasing large amounts of personal protective equipment as well as other supplies to keep its employees protected from COVID nineteen. This additional funding will allow the department to continue to purchase items such as masks, gloves, gowns, goggles, hand sanitizer, and cleaning supplies. All of these items are essential to keep employees safe during the COVID nineteen pand- pandemic. The Police Department, as well as all other city departments, are tracking expenses related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The city expects to be reimbursed by the federal government for many of these expenses at a later date. The contingency fund currently has a balance of one million, one hundred thousand dollars and after this transfer, the account will have a balance of one million, seventy thousand dollars. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number nine.
Move.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Kodo, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the transfer, a no vote would be to disapprove it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The motion carries and the transfer is approved. Item number ten, requesting approval of a contract for PEG PETIA grant from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, Public Utilities Regulatory Authority.
Motion approve item number ten.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Martinez McCarthy. The funds are specifically requesting for upgrades in addition to wireless access points up to two hundred ninety-one, as well as survey assessments to inform replacement of new access points for the greatest impact and reduction of so-called dead zones for internet service in school buildings. The requested grant amount for this initiative to create a better performing network in the schools was two hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars with no matching funds. The motion having been, uh, to approve, having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve, a no vote to disapprove, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the motion is approved. With respect to item number eleven, the request is for a public hearing for the, to approve the purchase and sale agreement to sell property located at seven fifty Baldon Street to Mr. Arben Esrulie, who was the successor responding to RFP number six three six seven, the sale of surplus property. Looking to set up the meeting, would it be the next meeting or do we have to go two out, Mike? Public hearing will be at the next meeting?
On May eleventh.
May eleventh, okay.
On May eleventh.
May eleventh, six fifty-five P M, is there a motion?
So move. Mr. President.
Second.
Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Martinez McCarthy. A yes vote would be to approve the public hearing on May eleventh at six fifty-five P M here and a no vote would be to disapprove it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the motion, um, carries. Item number twelve, requesting approval of an energy efficiency services letter of agreement between the city of Waterbury and Eversource Energy for the efficiency project number two zero P zero 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 eight four four of the Waterbury Pollution Control Authority facility. Is there a motion?
Motion approve. Item number twelve.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Martinez McCarthy, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the, uh, services letter of agreement, a no vote would be to disapprove it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries and the agreement is approved. Item number thirteen is the consideration in action on the mayor's proposal for compliance of Section six, Executive Order seven S, suspension and modification of the, uh, tax deadlines and collection efforts. Is there a motion?
Item thirteen.
Motion by Alderman Brunelli to approve, seconded by Alderman Lopez. To be, this resolution, in accordance with the governor's executive order and mayor's proposal, would allow people until October first to make their tax, uh, payments this year without being, um, considered late. It's a ninety-day extension from the first sixty days from the current race period. Uh, you would have to demonstrate, however, that you have been adversely affected by something going on with the COVID, uh, pandemic in order to qualify for that. Uh, is there any discussion on this?
Mr. President?
Yeah. Alderman Sherman?
Thank you very much. Um, I think everybody's, uh, appreciating that the city's moving forward with this. I was curious, Mike, if we had run any numbers to see what the possible effect would have on, um, on what we bring in, on our revenues for, um, property taxes.
What's been done at this point is the, you know, for those individuals that apply for the program, um, it will, um, delay, uh, the timeframe in which the revenues come in. We, at the end of the day, uh, you know, certainly support this program. We, the objectives, uh, as the bills are issued each year is to, uh, generate the, you know, the collection of taxes on a timely basis. So we, from the, uh, analysis that's been done to this point, So we, from the analysis that's been done to this point, as far as the implication on revenues, I think the implication, you know, more than anything is going to be on the timing of which the tax collections are coming in. We will be at the start of the fiscal year on July 1st. So in past years, certainly the majority of payments on the first installment are collected during that month of July. In this case, it'll just be the scenario where, you know, for those individuals that apply for the program that have been significantly impacted, those revenues will come in as far out as through the month of September with the grace period extended to October 1st.
Do we have any, any thought on whether or not we'll be able to make our, our property tax rate like we normally do? I think it is at 96.5. Is that, is that correct? I believe that's the, our typical number.
Yeah, the, the collection rate assumption in the budget is a 96%. And, you know, once we are through the grace period, we will, you know, move forward with the normal collection practices that have been in place and, you know, with the objective as the year goes on, you know, to collect the unpaid taxes during those subsequent nine months that are remaining in that fiscal year and the next fiscal year. So I think from the standpoint of achieving the 96%, 96% collection rate, we think, you know, there'll be, you know, we'll be in a pretty good place given the ability of time that'll still exist from October 1st through June 30th of 2021. Again, with, to pursue the collections with the various tools that we have in place. And again, with the, you know, the expectation of, you know, achieving the 96% collection rate by the end of the fiscal year.
Do you foresee, or have we had any conversations concerning the possibility of the nonessential businesses being, remaining closed past the May 20th date? Have we had any discussion concerning that? And the possibility of us needing to possibly push that date out further than October 1st?
There hasn't been anything to that effect. What's been done to this point is to follow the, the executive order, the instructions in the executive order that's been provided through the Office of Policy and Management.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mike. I fully support this.
Thank you. Just to be clear, Mike, we couldn't go, we couldn't make a change to that October 1st date unless there was an additional change in the state. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there any further discussion with respect to this item? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve the resolution granting the 90-day extension. A no vote would be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the motion is approved. With respect to new business item number 14, it's a budget transfer to move $125,000 from the city's contingency account to a new citywide account with COVID-19 related expenses and the Health Department's emergency medical supplies account. Various city departments have been purchasing personal protective equipment and supplies to keep various city, to keep city employees and residents safe during the pandemic. City departments have also assisted in preparation and delivery of meals to our senior population, as well as the delivery of groceries and prescriptions to our residents. The transfer of $100,000 to the new citywide COVID-19 account would provide a funding source for these types of expenses and any other COVID-19 expenses that may arise in the future. This account would be used for expenses that are unable to be accommodated by department budgets. The transfer of $25,000 to the Health Department's emergency medical supplies account will allow the department to continue providing PPE to employees as well as restock its inventory. All city departments are tracking the expenses related to the COVID and the city expects to be reimbursed by the federal government at a later date. This transfer is also from the contingency account. So after the $30,000 that came out from the prior transfer that we approved with respect to the Police Department, the contingency account will now have a balance of $905,000. Is there a motion with respect to new business item number 14?
Motion approve, item number 14.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Martinez McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the transfer signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it and the transfer is approved. With respect to standing committees, Mike, do you have that one with you? That's the only one that I don't have anything on. Can you do that?
I do. Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize that the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments to tax bills in the amount of $3,305.96 as submitted by Frank A. Caruso, Revenue Collection Manager.
So move. Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Cotto, who's second is that?
Weaver.
Elena.
Alderwoman Weaver, I'm sorry. Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the refunds and a no vote to disapprove them. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the refunds are approved. With that, I would entertain a motion that we come out of committee of the whole. Alderman Brunelli?
So move.
Thank you.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it and we're back to the regular order of business. And just to make this quick but to close the circle, the consent calendar would be to approve items one through 14 new business this evening, with item number 11 being to approve a public hearing on May 11th at 6:55 PM. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion approve, the consent calendar as read.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by both Alderman Lopez and Alderman Martinez McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve the consent calendar and a no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries and the consent calendar is approved. With that, we have no further business this evening. Does anyone have anything for the good of the order before we adjourn?
Do you have to wrap up standing?
Oh, we should do that one too. Yes, the standing committee, we did that as committee of the whole. We should have done when we came out, I'm sorry. All right. Standing committee, the committee of the whole would recommend that we approve the transfer of tax overpayments in the amount of $3,305.96. Is there a motion?
Motion approve.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded. You guys have all disappeared from my screens. I can't see which one of you is talking, so. Motion having been made and seconded, I think by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No. So then the overpayments are approved as well. Thank you, Alderman Sherman. Is there anything else to come to before the board for the good of the order? Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn and God bless.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded by Alderman Martinez McCarthy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it or adjourned. Thank you all very much. This is still a very awkward way to do these meetings and I'm hoping we can all be back together soon. But thank you again for all of your participation and to those who called in on the budget and public speaking as well. I appreciate you remaining involved. Good two weeks. Stay safe, stay home if you can. Take care, stay away from everyone else, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bye. Bye, Waterbury.